Hey, this is going to constitute the city council meeting for the city of Rainbow City for April 10th of 2023. And I'm going to ask Jeff Prince if he'll do the invocation. It'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand?
And would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening with grateful hearts for all that you do for us. Lord, we come a day after Easter where we celebrated the resurrection of our risen King and Savior. Father, we just thank you so much for loving each and every one of us and what all you do for us each and every day. God, I just ask now that you still our hearts and our minds that as we do the business for the city of Rainbow City, that everything we do and say would be pleasing in your side. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you turn your cell phones to the all for silent position, we would appreciate it. And I ask the clerk to take a roll call.
Anita Bedwell here, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five has approved the minutes of the regular meeting of March 13th and the special called meeting of March 23rd of 2023, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number six is the award bid for 2023 spring resurfacing and and the 2023 spring micro-surfacing project. And I'll, I'll ask that, that we just tabled this until, until I can deal with the, we had a bidder that came in and it was a single bid, and I'd like to be able to go back for negotiating on that.
So Mayor, if you'll change that motion to a postponement.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll change that to a postponement. And then we'll bring you guys back together. Those in, any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number seven is personnel actions, and it's to accept the resignation of Michelle Bridges. Animal control effective Monday, March 20th. Post for a part-time position in animal control for 10 days to end on Friday, April 21st. Autumn Floyd Animal Control from part-time to full-time, beginning Friday, March 24th. Accept the resignation of Bradford Hillier in the Street Department, effective Thursday, March 30th of 2023, and post that position for 10 days. And hire Adam King as a certified police officer, effective Friday, April 21st of 2023, and I'd entertain a motion that we accept those in its entirety.
Some move.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Is, is Adam here? Okay. Gotcha. Number eight is a memorandum of understanding between Etowah County Mega Sports Authority and the city of Rainbow City. This allows for us to be able to start doing some of the maintenance out at the Etowah County Mega Sports Authority. And y'all, y'all have all received a copy of that memorandum of understanding. And I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept that.
Some move.
Is there any, any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number nine is to request new signature cards on three of our checking accounts opened at the exchange bank to allow myself, Beth Lee, and Crystal Gazaway as the signers. Those are listed below as the sales tax, the 2023 bond account, and also the opioid settlement account.
Some move.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 10 is the release of a recorded deed or lien at 205 Hayden Avenue. It's been paid in full at the rate of $247.50, and that's reference resolution 15-08. I'd entertain a motion that we release that recorded lien. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 11 is a public hearing ordinance number 575, amending the zoning ordinance number 360, section 61, for highway commercial district, highway commercial district uses for many warehouses as permitted. And this is a time and place for the public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to speak for or against this ordinance? Anyone at all? I need a motion to introduce the ordinance as read. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any, any opposed? Need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take a vote, including me?
Anita Bedwell?
Yes.
Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince?
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins?
Yes.
Clark Hopper?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes. Number 12 is resolution number, I'm sorry. Need a motion to adopt.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take a roll call, including me?
Anita Bedwell?
Yes.
Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince?
Yes.
Jamison Jenkins?
Yes.
Clark Hopper?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes. Number 12 is resolution number 23-06, and that's an agreement with the state of Alabama for access management of State Road 77 from Church Street to Sherwood Drive, including unused traffic signal to resurface Church Street from US 411 to State Road 77. This is the Project ATRIP 2, the number listed. And I entertain, do we have to do a public hearing or not?
No, sir, you don't.
I'd entertain a motion that we pass this resolution as read.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 13 is resolution number 23-07. That's an agreement with Sane Associates for surveying and engineering services for ATRIP 2. And that's the improvement for the same project listed in 12. And that authorizes Mayor Taylor to sign this agreement. I would entertain a motion that you allow me that privilege.
Some move.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 14 is resolution number 23-08. That's a nuisance abatement on, at 113 East Grand Avenue in Rainbow City to demolish and remove debris. The owner to reimburse Rainbow City not to exceed $4,000. And I would entertain a motion that we pass this resolution as read.
Some move.
Any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 15 is resolution number 23-09. It's a nuisance abatement at 117 East Grand Avenue. Rainbow City to demolish and remove debris. Owner to reimburse Rainbow City not to exceed $6,000. I'd entertain a motion that we pass this resolution as read.
Some move.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 16 is a, is an ad request for the messenger for 2023. And what would be the pleasure of counsel?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we do a quarter-page ad for the amount of $150.
There's a motion and a second. Those in, any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 17 is surplus, some administrative, some surplus items in the administrative area, and sealed bids will be taken until April 24th at 4:30. And those are listed on the agenda and can be found on our website. I need a motion to surplus those items.
Some move.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? We're down to departmental reports. Is there any department heads that'd like to speak? Anybody got anything? Okay, we'll move to council reports and, and comments.
Mr. Adam King is back there.
Yeah.
He just came in.
Oh, Adam, you're, you're our, our new officer. Well, congratulations, buddy. We got you already on. We're, we're ahead of you.
I appreciate that.
It's good to have you. We appreciate you coming to Rainbow City. We, we hope you, you stay here a long, long time. You're going to be working for a great police chief and an extremely professional police department. Thank you. Hey, nice to meet you. Would you like to come up and say anything? We'll give you 20 or 30 minutes for a speech. Understand? We do, we do appreciate you. Anyone else? We'll go to council comments, and then we'll go to our public comments. We'll start with Mr. Prince.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to start out by saying I appreciate all the hard work that Kenneth Payne and all of the Rainbow City lines did this past Saturday, or Saturday was a week ago, excuse me. With Pancake Day, it was a pleasure to come out. And, and I don't really call that work. That's fun. Somebody sitting up here to my right claimed that they flipped 500,000 pancakes. I would demand a recount on that. But half a million's a big number. But, but we did enjoy that and thank y'all for all you do for our community. I want to say a word of thanks too to our street department, who went to Sardis a couple weeks ago when they had a EF0, I believe, tornado. It doesn't matter what number you put behind it, it's still a tornado. Lot of damage and trees down, and, and we sent equipment and personnel up there to help them. And my understanding is their mayor contacted Mayor Taylor to, just to say a word of thank you, because we're all in this together. All of our cities, it's, it's good to see our cities working together. And lastly, congratulations, Officer Adam King. Glad to have you. As the mayor said, you are coming to the best, we're a little biased, but the best police department in, not just Etowah County, maybe the state of Alabama, possibly the United States. So, that being said, a couple Friday afternoons ago, I was grilling out, and I hear some of our finest coming with sirens blaring. And we had five, if I counted correctly, patrol cars, four fire trucks for a grease fire. And before the fire department could ever get there, we had one of our officers had that thing out with his fire extinguisher out of his patrol unit. And I just want to say thank you guys for what you do. You care about our community. You care about people. We saw another senseless act of violence today in Kentucky. We've seen it in Tennessee. And to think that it's not possible that something like that couldn't happen here, I think is very naive. You guys put your clothes on every morning not knowing if you're coming home. And that's just a fact. And I, I just want to say how much respect I have Chief Yancey and all of our police department and all of our first responders. Without you guys, we couldn't do anything. So thank you guys very much for keeping us safe. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Ms. Bedwell?
Thank you. I too was thinking about the folks in Louisville today. That's a sad time for everybody, even though we don't live in Louisville. There are brothers and sisters and, and just the fact that it happened is just a very sad thing. We need to remember all of those and those families. And being in a bank, that's just, who would have expected anything to go on? Just like Jeff said, we all can face that at some time or another. So we appreciate all that our first responders do. It's nice to have you and your wife and our Rainbow City family. So thank you for being here. Officer Brown is about to leave us to go abroad. And we appreciate your service that you were, are doing. You'll be gone for a few months, and we will remember you and your family as well. So yes, Kenneth, thank you so much for our successful Pancake Day. It is always fun. The better boy and the girl have a good time. So it's, all the things put together that all happens around and makes our, makes us have a good city, doesn't it? So just thank you very much. And that, I guess, is all that I have. Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to say, as with Kenneth, as my witness, that Mayor Taylor did not allow me on the pancake grill Saturday because he was scared. And that's just all, that's the only way I know how to say it, Ken. I mean, he just wouldn't let me over there. So his numbers are definitely off. I'll just, I'll just tell you that. But Jeff is right. I mean, it really, it never is work when we're together. Pancake Day, Cleanup Day, doesn't matter what it is, it's not work, because we're always having a good time together. I mean, that really sounds so cliche, but I mean, it really is so true. We are always having a good time together while we're getting work done. And that's really cool to get to be a part of. I want to say congratulations to the King family, to both of you. We're certainly glad to have you here. And I do want to tell Sergeant Brown that I do appreciate you. The job that we do every day is difficult, but what you're doing is an even larger sacrifice than the job that we do every day as it is. And so I appreciate that, and we recognize you for that. During our work session, we had an eighth grader from Rainbow Middle School who is about to become an Eagle Scout at the age of 14 very soon, which is incredible, come by and ask for some help with his Eagle Scout project, which is going to be building some new shelves for the band room at Rainbow Middle School, because he saw a need there as they're starting to fall apart a little bit. And so this is going to be his project. And so we want to help him with that. And so, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we give Mr. Ryan McDill a donation in the amount of $200 to help him with his Eagle Scout project.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
Good idea.
Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed?
And that is all I have.
Thank you all. Mr. Clark?
I want to welcome Adam. I've known Adam for a while. Him and my son Cody worked at jail together, I believe, at the sheriff's office. Blake, you'll be missed. We don't be forgotten. We'll talk bad about you while you got on, but we'll, you know I am. That's the only way I know how to be. But I do want to do this. I want to thank the mayor and the council for helping Ryan. Ryan is a half-brother to my son. They contacted me about this Eagle project, invited me and down Saturday to see it. And Troop 151, which is based out of the Methodist church in Southside, Southside Methodist United, or something to that nature, Jeff. And it was a treat. It was a treat to see these young men working. They were standing. And it was kind of unique, because we was having a 62-mile bike race and a 40-mile bike race and a 20-mile back. And so Rainbow Middle was buzzing when I was there with people. But just seeing these troops get together, because once Ryan accomplishes, this will give this pack their third Eagle Scout, with two or three more coming. And to me, that, that just blows my mind.
That's awesome.
That just blows my mind. And when I, I, I told the scoutmaster, when they all achieved it, I would ask us to give each one of them a proclamation of their accomplishment, if that's okay with everybody. And then we'll have one big session where we can honor all of them for doing that, because scouting has took a black eye over the years, whether it's Boy Scout, Girl Scout, because of some knuckleheads. Like we were talking earlier with the stuff in Louisville, with the random shooters and things of that nature. We are in a sports craze generation where everything, especially in Alabama, is about football, baseball, and basketball, basically in that order. Not all kids can do that. And Ryan is in the band along with other ones. I asked about that, because most of the scouts in this troop don't play ball. They're actually in the band, and there are over 100 members in Rainbow Middle School Band, which was another thing that kind of blew my mind. But I think the scouting is still one of the best things our young people can start from Cub Scout on till they make their decisions. And I'm very proud that that Troop 151 has got Rainbow City and Southside kids in it. And with that, I'm through.
Thank you. I have a few announcements. The RSDP Free Tax Service is going to continue at the community center, and it's on Wednesday through April 12th, on Wednesday from 11:30 to 3:30. Saturday, May 6th of 2023 gives you an opportunity to come out, for Mr. Jenkins to come out and have more fun. And we have the Rainbow City Cleanup Day. And Kenneth, do you want to, you want to have anything to say about that? Yeah, would you come up?
I'd like to.
Yeah. And state, state your name and your elected position.
Mayor, I'm Rida Payne.
Kenneth Payne of the Rainbow City Lines Club. Let's start with that. We served, this is a rough figure, we had to get everything together, but 470 people. So we probably served 500 people. Probably had around 60 workers. So we had a great day, one of our better years that we've had in a long time on Pancake Day. So it was a lot of fun. It was a lot of hard work. Me and Jeff Bevel looked like the Pillsbury Doughboys before we got done. And I needed two, and she didn't stay in there very long. But there was a lot of pancakes cooked. I mean, now you just think about 500 people, and you served, that's a lot of sausage and pancakes. So, and Cleanup Day, May the 6th, we, you know, we're going big. We, we get through one thing, we go to something else. And after Cleanup Day, we got some other projects. So we'll just stick with what's going on. But Cleanup Day is a big thing. You know, we'll pick up 200 to 300 bags from 8 o'clock to 11 o'clock, and then we serve lunch for the workers. And anybody that won't show up, maybe dough prizes and a lot going on, which is another good day. So I'd just like to thank everybody for the participation. And, you know, it's all volunteers. Like Pancake Day is not anything that nobody's out anything except for their time. And all that's donated, and everybody's appreciated. And it's just another project that you just got to have a heart for it. And thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you, Kenneth. As, I'll go ahead and, is there, is there anybody here that'd like to make a public comment? Anyone here that'd just like to have anything to say? I see Chris Sholder in the back. That's rare that he would be quiet. But we'll let, we'll let it go this time. I, I'll go over my comments. Blake, we appreciate what you're doing. Blake's had to, no, there he is, step back in. We appreciate your service. You know, I've, I've done that, you know, several times, and that's, that's not an easy thing, step away from your life and your family to go and do that kind of work. And, and it is serious business, and I appreciate the, the, the weight of that, of that work that you're going to be doing. And we, we wish you well. And, you know, we're back here. If you need anything from us, you let us know. So we'll drop you, we'll drop you a, a box of cookies or something. But we appreciate you so much. Pancake Day, it's always a good time. I did, I think we did average, it was somewhere around a half a million pancakes. It had to be. Because it's like they never stopped asking for pancakes. But, but it is, it's a great time, and it's, it's just a fun time for our, to see our city turn out and support that club. And, and I appreciate the, the people that did come out. Adam, again, good to have you here. You're, you're going to love this job. And I promise you, you're going to want to stay here a long time. And just, you, all, all I can say is just make sure you protect your family. And that, that's what we're, we're out here to do, is to make sure that you're, you're looking out for our families during the day and, or during the night, and, and your family in, in that other time. And, and we'll do our part to support you in doing that. The street department going to Sardis, big deal. We ended up tripling our efforts up there. They had asked us for one truck, and, and Michael and I discussed this. And we ended up taking three trucks and skid steer and all the personnel that it took to man that. And Sardis is not, not only our neighbor, but our, our friends live there as well. And getting a chance to go up there and help them the way they helped us back in, what, 18, 19? In 18, goes, you know, my house was one of the houses affected by the tornado at that time. And, and I just appreciate having employees that, that were raring to go, that got up early and, and headed off up there to help that, that sister city. The, the guy that put the fire out, Jacob Works, Jacob, I think we're going to interview him for a, a position at the fire department. He's always wanted to be one. They all want to be a fireman. And so he'll get his opportunity just as soon as we possibly can. But we appreciate what he did. You know, that's, there's, there's a lot to be said about being on a fire truck, going to somebody's house that's burning. a lot to be said about being on a fire truck, going to somebody's house that's burning, and being called off because a police officer went there and and took his fire extinguisher and and put the house out, and I admit that that happens. I don't want to, but it does, but we we appreciate the fact that we can work together. Yeah, and they're giving me some signs and signals from the back where our police officers are standing. They've got them a little bit of a kangaroo court back there, but we we do appreciate the fact that these these first responders work together, and they are they are truly brothers in their craft. The the kid, Ryan McDill, he's not a kid. He's a young man from Rainbow Middle School making about to make Eagle Scout. That's that's unbelievable. I had some some military friends and some commanders that were Eagle Scouts, and there was a big difference between a commander that had had gone through the Eagle Scout program and a commander that just honestly even came out of West Point. There's a different mindset to those people. They they're very, very well-rounded, and that that young man was very impressive today in our in our work session. We went to Washington, D.C. I know y'all know that, and we went up there and spent some time with our representatives. We are well-represented in Washington, and I think that was probably the most fruitful trip that I personally have had going up, and getting an opportunity to sit down and and not only just hash out business, but getting a chance to allow them to understand what our needs are and that that we and what our growth potential is. Rainbow City is a growing city. We've just been identified in the the last few weeks as being one of the strategic cities in the state of Alabama that's moving forward in in not only in commercial but industrial development and just economic development as a whole. So I just want you to know that that has a lot to do with the leadership of this of this city, but it has more to do with the fact that we have been positioned and postured ourself in a way that allows for us to move forward into the future, and and that's a that's not the easiest thing to do, and that goes back to years and years and years of leadership prior to this group of people that's up here right now. And so I just want to thank them for that. And is there anyone else that's got anything? I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate you being here.